Order please stand for the invocation.
Oh, grace you heaven and Father Lord, we once again we give you thanks. Father, we thank the Lord for life, health, and strength. Father, during this heatwave, Lord, we ask that you be with the elderly, Lord, to those who may can find comfort during this hot spell. Continue, Lord, to let us work together hand in hand so we make our county a better place. Father, we ask this in your son Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Next, I entertain a motion for approval of agenda items. If you have anything that you want to add.
So moved.
All right. It's been moved and second that we accept the agenda as printed. All in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. It's unanimous. Thank you. Next, we have several public hearings. The first ordinance 770 to adopt the annual budget and to make appropriations for Marlboro County for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2018, ending June 30th, 2019. Mr. Mullin, would you share your comments on the budget, please?
Yes, ma'am. Since our work session, we've been hard at work trying to sharpen our pencils and make sure we give you the best possible budget. I did give you, you all should have a copy of this handout.
Yes.
Which will give you kind of a summary to look at. And I'll give you a couple of remarks. You know, as you know, our first step in every year we've done the budget is to try to cut costs. And we try to increase efficiency as we go along during the year. So this year, as we told you at the work session, we've cut $350,000 in recurring costs. And last year, we cut 400. So we're, but even with that, there are some increases that we can't avoid. One of them, you'll see, is the amount we pay the state for retirement for our employees went up. We can't avoid that. In fact, we're told to do that. The budget also includes some increases that we should not avoid, like making sure our employees are paid fairly. And that's particularly important as we gain efficiency and maybe people are doing a little more than they were before. And then we also have some things in the budget that we need to work to avoid, like our workers' compensation insurance went up $40,000. We need to work on a program to get that down. So after we did all that at the work session the last time, where we left was that we would go, we were going to require approximately a two, two and a half mil tax increase. That's where we left it last time. But we were able to work some more to find a way to avoid that. I mean, we all know our people can only stand so much. We're a poor county. People are struggling to pay their bills. And so we can't just keep piling taxes on top of, on top of taxes. We worked a good bit Friday. We worked till late in the day Friday working on this. And what we were able to do is to find ways that we had saved some money this year in this budget that we maybe can't count on for next year, but we could squeeze this year to buy a few vehicles that we had in next year's budget. So by buying them this year, we're able to reduce next year's budget by that amount. And after we did that and some other things, we've gotten it down to where the only increase we see needed is the amount that the state has forced upon us for the retirement part. So the unfunded state mandate would be a .83 mil increase. But as far as the other increases, the cost of living increase, we could, y'all could take, or any other tax increases related to the general fund budget, we're recommending, and the budget you have recommends that you not increase those taxes at all. So we're, we're happy to report that to you. And any questions y'all may have as we go. All of that being said, we also have a separate tax mileage for EMS, as you well know. And we've done a lot of research. We've reported in these meetings a lot about what we found with EMS. We all know that our hospital closed, and Marlboro EMS has been our EMS provider. And they have done transports for, not emergency transport, regular transport, to make ends meet for a number of years. And they did it to try to make those ends meet where we didn't have to have a big tax increase. But we're starting to see to where that's affecting our response times, how fast they can get to you. It's particularly affecting the spikes. So you know, it may not be every time it's a delay, but maybe occasionally there's an accident or something serious that they take longer to get there because they're doing those transports. Again, they're doing that for the right reasons. But the bottom line is that it takes more money than we've been allocating to run EMS. It's just, it's just the facts. So the budget we presented for EMS is 1.1 million dollars, which is up 400, about 400 and some odd dollars. That would require a seven mil tax increase. I want to make it very clear that that, those taxes are for EMS. They are for nothing else. They can't be melted into the general fund, the council, nor the administrator, or anyone else can go and take that money and use it for anything but EMS. We're audited every year. There's all kinds of protections in there. So this isn't some sort of shell game to get more money. This is EMS. And we have a task force that's still working, and, and we put some, made a few changes in the EMS contract you'll look at later on. And basically, that just reinforces the requirements that we get reports on how things are going, the financial stuff, and how that's managed, all the things we need to know to make sure we're doing things the best way. It will allow us to, allow us if approved, to pay more to Marlboro Rescue or Marlboro EMS so that they can cease the transport business, which we feel like will eliminate the delays. It also puts money in place that if we reach the point where we wanted it to be a county department, that money would be in place and we can move in that direction. So you know, it's like anything else. We can talk about how we do it, but you've got to have the money to do it.
All right. Thank you. Any other comments or questions? I'll call hearing for ordinance 770 to a close. Next, ordinance 771 to approve the capital improvement plan for Marlboro County for the fiscal year 2019 through 2023, five-year period.
We have had some discussion about this as we moved along. We were looking at making this something that we funded, like a budget, but we've gone back to making a plan. It is a plan. It is a strategy on how we replace equipment and vehicles. It is not a, like the budget, it's not set in stone. It's just the guidelines. And so we ask that you later on approve that.
All right. Thank you. Public hearing for ordinance 771 close. Public hearing for ordinance 772, ordering a referendum to determine whether the South Carolina Department of Revenue may issue temporary permits to allow for the possession, sale, and consumption of alcoholic liquors by the drink to bona fide nonprofit organizations and business establishments authorized to be licensed for consumption on premises, sales to allow the sale of beer and wine at permitted off-premise locations without regard to the day or the hours of sale.
Madam Chairman, if this is approved, then we would move forward with putting it on the ballot in the fall.
All right. Questions or comments? I'll call public hearing for ordinance 772 close. Next, public hearing for ordinance 773, authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of abularum taxes and special source revenue credit agreement by and between Marlboro County, South Carolina, and Flakeboard America, limited to provide for payments of fee in lieu of taxes, authorizing certain infrastructure credits and other related matters.
Madam Chairman, this is a tax incentive agreement to allow Flakeboard to expand their plant. So this is an exciting thing. We haven't had a public announcement about that, but you see their name in here. So we're excited to be able to extend that to them so they can continue to grow and also to, to preserve the jobs they have now.
All right. Thank you. Comments or questions? All right. Public hearing for ordinance 773 close. Public hearing for ordinance 774, authorizing the execution and delivery of an infrastructure credit agreement by and between Marlboro County, South Carolina, and Palmetto Brick to provide for special source revenue credits and the inclusion of property to be owned or operated by Palmetto Brick and a joint county industrial park and three other matters related there, too.
Like the previous ordinance, this is to allow Palmetto Brick to expand their plant. They've been there since 1917, I think. Been a very stable employer here in the county. And so we're excited that they'll be able to, to grow. Again, there hasn't been a public announcement. We'll have one hopefully soon, a press release, but this is good news.
All right. No other further comments or questions? I call the public hearings to a close. Next, we will proceed with the approval of minutes, May 8, 2018, regular council meeting. Comments, questions, editing changes?
Madam Chairman, most willing to accept the minutes as written?
It's been moved and second that we accept the minutes from the May 8, 2018 meeting, approved as written without corrections. All in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. Thank you, it's unanimous. Next, the minutes for the budget work session held on May 29, 2018. It's been moved and second that we accept the minutes as printed for the May 29, 2018 budget work session. All in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. Thank you. Call council meeting held on May 29, 2018.
I move we approve those meetings as written.
So second.
All right. It's been moved and second that we approve the minutes from the May 29, 2018 call council meeting. All in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. Thank you, it's unanimous. Next, proceeding to old business. Ordinance 770 to adopt the annual budget and to make appropriations for Marlboro County for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2018 and ending June 30th, 2019. This is the third reading. We heard the details and comments presented by Mr. Mullin during the public hearing. Are there any further questions, comments?
I mean, I'd like to thank staff for sharpening their pencil. You know, for every dollar we can save and spend wisely, I mean, it helps our citizens as far as not having to raise the mileage, understanding the EMS. I think everybody understands the EMS struggles and what we have, that whenever you finally realize that we weren't funded enough at that point. So I mean, no matter what it is or who it is, you know, we, you have to provide enough money to make sure we do. Because if they come to me or your house, you want somebody to be able to respond. So but I thank staff for their hard work and, and doing that. So with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve their reading.
I'd like to second that motion.
It's been moved and second that we approve ordinance 770, which adopts the budget for council for the next fiscal year. All in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. Thank you. Next, ordinance 771 to approve the capital improvement plan for Marlboro County for the period of 2019 through 2023. Third reading, discussion and points were made by the administrator earlier during the public hearing. Any further comments? Hearing none, I entertain a motion.
So moved.
It's been moved and second that we adopt ordinance 771, truly the capital improvement plan, third reading. All in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. Thank you. Ordinance 772, ordering the referendum to determine whether the South Carolina Department of Revenue may issue temporary permits to allow for the possession, sale, and consumption of alcoholic beverages and for the consumption on premise sales and for BNY permitted off-premise locations without regard to the days or hours of sale. Third reading. Questions or comments?
I move we accept this third reading.
All right. It's been moved and
Second.
Second, that we adopt ordinance 772, third reading. All in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. Thank you. Ordinance 774, excuse me, 773, authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of abularum tax and special source revenue credits and agreement by and between Marlboro County and Flakeboard America, limited to provide for payments of fee in lieu of taxes, authorizing certain infrastructure credits and other related matters. Third reading. Comments were made during the public hearing. This will allow for the expansion of this business. All right. It's been moved by Ms. Plato.
Second.
Second by Mr. Misery that we approve, third reading for ordinance 773. All in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. Thank you. Ordinance 774, authorizing the execution and delivery of an infrastructure credit agreement by and between Marlboro County and Palmetto Brick for special source revenue credits, the inclusion of property to be owned or operated by Palmetto Brick and a joint county industrial park and other matters related there, too. It was interesting to hear that this business, Palmetto Brick, has been in operation since the early 1900s.
Yep.
I think it's the oldest, this is the oldest company in our county, correct?
Something like that.
Probably is, yeah.
Probably about time to line up a tour. They'd like to give tours.
Yes. It is certainly worthy of note. And we're happy to be able to provide this to help them expand their business. Questions or comments? I entertain a motion.
Motion to accept. So moved.
It's been moved and second that we approve ordinance 774, third reading for Palmetto Brick. All in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. Thank you. Next, we move to new business. Resolution 061801, authorizing submission of an application by Marlboro County to the South Carolina EM Emergency Management Office for the fiscal year 2018, local emergency management performance grant and authorization to accept the grant if awarded. Does this grant require a match?
You know, I don't know the answer to that, but I know that we include it in our budget every year.
Okay. And I think it includes something small.
I don't, I don't think so. It's just for emergency management.
Okay.
And it does offset tax dollars by that amount. So it's a good thing.
All right.
Need a vote.
Questions, comments?
Madam Chairman, I'd like to most willing to accept resolution 061801.
All right. It's been moved and second that we pass resolution 061801. All in favor, let it be known by raising your right hands. Thank you. Resolution 061802, authorizing Marlboro County to renew the agreement with Marlboro County Rescue Squad, providing paramedic-level emergency service and transfer services throughout Marlboro County. This is a very important resolution. It is, it comes after much thought and cooperation with all parties to continue to be able to provide medical service and transporting our citizens to hospitals. And as Mr. Mullin said earlier, losing a hospital has put a strain on the EMS service. But I think if you have read through this document, you see that it provides for reasonable continuation and improvements on both sides so that our citizens won't notice any difference. If anything, response time will be shorter. And that's very important to everybody concerned. It was a lot of red ink to look at, but it was worthy of note that the changes were made. And I think it's been like 45 years.
Yeah, well, I'm not sure how long they've, but I think they've been contracting with us since the mid-'90s, maybe.
But the contract hasn't changed.
Well, yeah, the contract is a number of years.
Yeah, a number of years. I saw 45 somewhere. But anyway, this is a living document, and all parties have agreed to. So I entertain a motion.
Motion. Second.
It's been moved and second that we accept resolution 061802, the agreement between Marlboro County and the Marlboro County Rescue Squad for the duration as outlined in the contract. All in favor, let it be known by raising your right hands. Thank you, it's unanimous. Next, we have opening and acceptance of bids. The Macadam Base, Crush and Run. Mr. Mullin, would you give us some details?
Mr. Carabo was going to tell you about that.
Oh, I'm sorry, sir.
He spends all the money. I just keep track of it.
Madam Chairman, council members, we put out bids for Crush and Run to maintain our current roads that we're, we have in the county with Crush and Run. We're going to be looking at other cheaper options this year, but just to maintain what we're doing now, we put it out for bid. Fertigrating and paving was our only bidder. They came in at 21.05 per ton. Some of the other options we're looking at may be slag next year, maybe put some slag and do some test roads just to see, and that's half the price of Crush and Run. So we'll be, we'll be looking at other options next year, but this is just to maintain what we're doing right now. And staff recommends that we accept this bid.
Questions, comments? All right, I entertain a motion.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and second that we accept the recommendation of Mr. Carabo to approve this bid for the Crush and Run for the next fiscal year.
Thank you.
All in favor? Thank you, unanimous. All right. Are there any appointments to boards and commissions? All right. Ms. Moore, would you give us your financial report, please?
Madam Chair, members of council, for the month of May, expenditures were approximately 6.5% under budget for this point in the fiscal year. And as you can see from the bar graph, our revenues and expenses continue to trend consistently for this fiscal year as they have in prior years. Prior to association of counties, the local government fund will still be funded at the same level as last year. Both the House and the Senate funded the same 1% PIBA, employee retirement credit that they funded last year. Counties will still be required to increase their employer contribution 1% for fiscal year 18, 19 is mandated. Therefore, when more employers are hired or, you know, any changes, that means that it doesn't equal a full 1% credit to the county. Are there any questions?
Do we know a total what it's been since they've started cutting it several years ago? Do we have a total?
I do have that. I don't have it with me, but I do have it, and I could get that to you, yes.
Okay, I'd just like to know what a total is.
It's a pretty large number, yes.
The total that we have received.
Do we have not received since they, since they've cut it whenever, what, seven, six, seven, eight years ago?
Ms. Moore did a pretty good analysis at some point when it first started going on. It tells you all the things we have to pay for that the state makes us pay for. And it's probably worth an exercise, they'll update that here soon since it's just not getting any better.
Well, I actually have been working on updating it. I started, but I just haven't been able to finish. Just kind of when I've had time, I've been working on it. So I will do that, and I'll have that for you.
Yeah, I'd like to know just so we can let our people know as far as how much the total time that they've cut, what it's affected. Even the little increase that we have, it's a reason why the increase. If it had been totally funded, we may even could have been going down on taxes. I mean, that's, that's the thing that we want to get out. I mean, it's probably millions of dollars, I know, if we can get an exact amount. I appreciate it. Thank you.
And not only just taxes, it's just that other services that we should be able to provide for our citizens of all ages that we cannot because we have to be good stewards of a little bit of money to get to provide the essentials. And while you're there, I'd like to thank you and the finance department and Mr. Mullin for the work you did on the budget.
Thank you.
To be able to put us in pretty good shape such that we are requiring a much smaller amount from our reserve. You know, it scares me when you start spending from your savings. And this has been the first year in a long time that we've come under or at $300,000. So I understand you all worked hard, but hard work pays off. So I'm thankful for that. Before Mr. Mullin comes, or as he comes forward, I'd like to bring your attention to a letter that was placed at your station's address to Mayor Harke. It's come to our attention that the agreement that the county has with this city for exchange of services, notably the five-mile radius of fire protection around the city that the, into the county, the city provides in exchange for the housing of inmates in a detention center, has not been signed. Although we did pass a contract and forward it to the city, it has not been signed. This letter was hand-delivered to the mayor and all members of city council because it is, puts us in a very precarious situation that could threaten the safety of our citizens and cause some unnecessary increases in insurance premium when it comes to fire safety. So we did this because we really need to work with the city council to get this resolved. And Mr. Mullin, you may want to share some details?
The city council's meeting at the same time we're meeting. So hopefully, the urgency was to get it in their hands and for them to understand that because we don't have a contract, technically, people in a five-mile radius do not have fire protection. Now, we certainly hope they'll respond, and I'm sure they will, the city will. But this is a game of legal things, and we have to follow the law. And apparently, the, the format of what they want to pass tonight is different than what we did. So if they pass something different, then it's got to come back to you all. So it's very urgent, and I'm sure if we get something back, we need to act on. The chairman will call a meeting or whatever, but we don't need to play around with those sort of issues.
All right.
All right. Administrative report. Very quickly, you talk about the unfunded mandates from the state. We had, we're required to provide space for DSS and Health Department and all those folks. Every year, I get a letter of what's wrong at the DSS building. Then we find out that they've cut our money that they send us to take care of the DSS building. It's just, you know, demanding more and giving less is very difficult. We had employee service anniversaries, and we call out the ones over five years this month, where Jackie Baldwin with 14 years, Keith Bingham with nine years, Cindy Dever with seven years, Johnny Fair with 13 years, Tanya Harmon with 13 years, Mr. Pat Oden with 12 years, Charles Peterkin at 11 years, and Deborah, Deborah Weldon at 18 years. As far as the events we have coming up tomorrow, the partnerships meeting in the morning, and they're going to tour the Owen Dixie Building afterward at 9:00 to see that construction's going on. If any of you all want to come, that you're welcome to. They are, they are moving along, and they're doing work there. It's a good sign for all of us. It'll start at 9:00. We have a couple of retirement drop-ins. Everybody's retiring. First one is Mr. Ken McLean, which is the 22nd, which is, is that Thursday, I believe? Is that right? Friday? And it's from 2:00 to 4:00 at the Tax Assessor's Office. So come stop, stop by and thank Mr. McLean. He's been there for 19 years. Then we're having one for Mr. Grover McQueen the following Friday. And Grover's been the HR director for about 15 years, and he's going to still help us on a part-time basis, but he's taking his, his full-time retirement. So please come by with that as well. We did have a couple of updates on economic development. We are, I mean, other than what you saw tonight, which we need to be happy for, anytime existing industry's growing and staying around, that's a good thing. That's a good reference for us, and we want those folks to continue to grow. So what you approved tonight is a big help. Also, the Bowdoin Building, we've, we've given you some updates on that. That is moving along. We actually had expected to have an announcement prior to this meeting. They are, the company that's looking at it, figuring out the cost of some changes to the building they have to make. The state has put forth a very aggressive incentive package, and we have put forth, you know, our typical incentive package that'll have to come through you all. So I'm about 90% sure that's going to happen. It's exciting for us. It'll add about 100 jobs or more to our county. The Delta Project, we've been tackling for about a year. We are moving forward with it. We had a meeting with our environmental lawyer, Mr. Steve Weber, and also a consultant working for him. And we're preparing a presentation to take the de-hack to begin the cleanup and redevelopment of that. It's very exciting, and there's interest from the higher levels in Columbia about doing this. They realize we need that boost, and I have a feeling we're going to be able to, to get some help, some funding to help do this. So it's a good thing. One thing that I didn't mention in the budget thing is every year, on your tax bill for your house, for your legal residence, you have a thing called lost credit, local option sales tax credit, and it cuts your taxes a little bit. Well, what, the way that works, without getting too complicated, is the treasurer every year figures out how much of that we're going to get back, and we get it from sales tax. And then they figure out a percentage that they're going to give you help on your taxes. So you're guessing or estimating how much you're going to get. If you take in more than that in a year, then the next year, you got to add that on to that year's. So we've, we're pretty confident that this coming year, there'll be $200,000 to $300,000 in addition that we'll be able to put on the tax bills to help. in addition that we'll be able to put on the tax bills to help folks with their property tax. So hopefully, that'll completely offset this, the small part of the tax thing and help with some of the EMS going up. It's a, it's, it's a year-by-year thing, so you can't, you don't want to go buy a house on it. But it is a good thing, and we want to try to find that kind of thing any time we can. A few other things quickly. The McCall, you see this about the McCall Police Firing Range. Councilman Odom approached me, and, and he and I, and Doug Carabao met with the police chief in McCall. They have a piece of property next to their sewer treatment plant, or sewer treatment plant. And they want to make it more organized shooting range for the police department. And they've asked that we use our equipment to kind of move dirt around and make banks and all that. It's right, it touches our property, so it's sort of halfway on both sides. So that's something we can do, we can help. And it may even be that Mr. Odom probably would come back and we may want to square off that property and maybe make a request to you all to, to square that property off if there's, you know, a quarter acre, a half acre in there that squares it off. I think it's a good thing because it's down a dirt road coming from the backside of the McCall Love Park, and it's nothing but a litter place. And Mr. Odom pointed that out. And if we're able to put a gate at that end, then we're controlling that road and we're making it a police presence back there and all that is, it's a good thing. Mr. Odom may want to add something?
No, I just appreciate you taking the time to go over there. Like I said, not only from a litter standpoint, the police chief told me that nearly every weekend, they have to go out there and run people out there, children, underage, drinking and doing drugs. He said it's not hardly a weekend goes by that they don't have to go down there and run people off. So it'll cover, cover a lot of things once we do that. The gentleman that owns the farm right beside it, he's been troubled for years where people run down there. He has a bunch of cows. He's been troubled for years. So he was typically dead when I spoke to him the other day and let him know that we're going to close that road off and keep people from riding down by his pasture where his cows are. Appreciate it.
It's a good thing, and like the rest of y'all, Mr. Odom's always looking for what he can do to help his district. When we can, we'll help. Which leads us to the next thing, which is Blues Landing, which is the boat landing down near Oak River. You know, Mr. Blackman was pushing us to figure out what we needed to do there, and we determined that we did, in fact, own it. And since then, about a year ago, we've been figuring out what we need to do. And we're about through with putting rip, I call it rip rap, big granite rocks on the sides to keep it from washing back in, the mud washing down. And Public Works is doing that. They got to make little adjustments, but they're about there. The next thing is to try to put lighting out there. We're going to have to find bulletproof light bulbs, but the people that are giving us suggestions are what I call river rats that are down there all the time, and they all are kind of saying they'll help keep a, keep an eye out on it. So it had gotten to the point where the power company wouldn't put them up anymore because they were getting shot down. So we're going to figure it out and take a chance because if you're trying to put a boat in or out at night, you can only imagine. But I think it's, I think it's going to be a good thing, and it's something we own. We all take care of what we own. We put in for a grant with Duke that the period of applying has closed, and we'll hear something here soon. If we get that, we'll have gold-plated docks down there in bulletproof glass. We got some big plans, we just need to find some money, and we're able to do a lot with what we do have. Mr. Blackman, do you have anything to?
Now, I thank you for meeting with me Monday down there, and everything looked good. And like I said, we went over a few things, and they were working then, not only on that, but cleaning up too, getting trash and all. So it's come a long way, and I appreciate, I appreciate everything everybody's done.
Okay. And the last thing is I want to introduce you all to Donald Hampton. If Donald stand up, we've snagged Donald and gotten him to come on board and work for us as a codes enforcement officer. And what we've done, I think we've talked a little bit about it, is we had people that did different things, like animal control, or they did litter enforcement. We've taken the two we have now, which are Donald and Keith Williams, and cross-trained them so we can work on what we need to work on. So nobody's, you know, shoehorned into one thing. We're all can do it all. And we're excited about Donald having, having Donald on board. He's got a lot of fire service experience too, that always will help, and we appreciate it. We don't make him make a speech or anything. We'll save that for other people. So that's all I had. Chairman Prince, if there's anything else I can answer?
I think that's it. We have four people who've signed up for recognition of citizens. Please come to the podium and state your name, and each person has three minutes. First is this Mal Hyman.
Chairman, members of the council, citizenry. I'm Mal Hyman, candidate for Congress in this district, been a teacher for 42 years in the public schools, five years in a medium security men's prison, the last 30 years teaching sociology at Coca College. I am running because I don't see much honor in Washington, and early patriots pledged their lives, their fortune, and their sacred honor to form this country. I could confront a Congress where the wealthiest 1% put 97% of the money into elections, and they blind Congress to the interests of working people. We can see this in the tax bill that just passed. 80% of the benefits went to the wealthiest 1%. We have one in five kids doesn't have enough food to eat. Where the money was allocated, it wasn't targeted to production, research, and development. 90% of corporate profits go to stock buybacks, higher dividends, mergers and acquisitions. That wasn't changed in this tax bill. In 1950s, when our infrastructure was the envy of the world, we taxed the wealthy more and we invested in America more. And we had better roads, bridges, dams, sewer systems. We need to do this again. We need to recognize that in order for business to grow, for families to be secure, we have to invest in America. The longer we wait, the more expensive it is, the more dangerous it is. These investments could also include expanding the electrical grid to make it safer from cyber attacks so that we can bring in sources of energy, solar and wind in rural areas, into the cities where we can use it. Public housing, the waits in big cities are five years. We can have an awful lot of jobs rebuilding our infrastructure. We need to invest in early childhood education. President Obama was right. A dollar invested in early childhood education yields about $7 in return. If you're in government and you don't make that investment, you don't belong in government. This is our future. Been a teacher for 42 years. Marion Wright Edelman in this area fought for children. I believe she was right that all children have a right to food, healthcare, housing, good schools, safe streets, clean air, and clean water. I will fight the fight in Congress. I will not take a dime from corporate banking interests no man can serve to masters. That'll allow me to talk in Congress as I talk to you. I also believe part of this struggle is in the streets. We're calling for a day of prayer and fasting on behalf of the rights of children at the steps of the State House, April 2019. We need to make clear that children have rights in this country. I'd like to serve as the first member of Congress that's taught in the public schools and taught in the prisons, that can talk about the school-to-prison pipeline.
And thank you for your comments, sir.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity to talk with you today. Thank you all.
Next, Ms. Polly Meldrum.
We are long overdue to start recycling again. All of us surrounding towns do it. This marks the beginning. Our school will do. Laura Berg does it. Jerome does it, and we ought to be doing it. We are wasting our resources to dump them in a landfill. Whenever I see these garbage pails every week with the lids pushed up, and I know that three quarters of the stuff in these days could be recycled. We can't afford to waste our resources. I know that you may, you would like to move the parts, but I like it here. And we're not going to be able to stay if we don't keep our resources going. We're not going to be able to keep our resources going if we don't make landfill. We need to start recycling.
Thank you. Next, Pete Robyn. Would you?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, ladies and gentlemen, members of the council, and everybody here present. My name is Pete Robine. I moved here from Connecticut in 2006, so that makes me a damn major. Three things, and I'll try to be brief. In 2012, I raised money to donate a mural, a timeline of American history, to our high school. Meanwhile, the Marlborough County Adult Education Building bought one under the direction of Herbert Gould and then Mr. Jurgensen. So you can see that mural just by going down to the Marlborough County Adult Education Building, ask to see the timeline of American history. It's framed, it's on the wall. I did the frame myself. The one for the high school has been now five principals. This is an item for the, for the school board, but what goes on at the schools affects everybody in the county, so I'm going to bring up here. You know, whether it be Marlborough County or any county in the country, the health of the community really revolves in great part around the school system. Whether the schools are good, this town does well, whether or not, we see what happens. So anyway, five principals later, and I'm not going to go into all the details, but it's been a running nightmare to give an educational product to the school, to give it. I raised over $900 in 2012 and 13. Charles Datt donated 100 bucks. Mrs. Mullin gave 50 bucks. Floyd's 50. Bullard's 50. Dan Blake 100. Harry Eastland Senior 200. Farm Bureau 50. Mike at the Quality Inn 50, and many others. And five principals later, that chart is still in my house. No wonder our school system is so terrible. And it's not just here, it's around the country. The recent NAAP report came out, that is the National Assessment for Educational Progress. It's often referred to as America's Report Card. You can look up the line. And the, the results are abysmal. Our country's schools continue to decline, and the worst area of our academic achievement is where it comes to the story of our country. This is the story of our freedom, ladies and gentlemen. This is the story of our freedom. So a couple years ago, I started an organization called Teach Our Christian Heritage that would require our schools teach the Christian story of this country. Let me just give you one, one example. Here's a quote from George Washington. In 1779, that was the middle of our Revolutionary War, "We were vying for the loyalty of the Indians with the British." The British wanted the Indians on their side, of course, we wanted the Indians on our side. So we were vying for their loyalty.
Mr. Robine, thank you for your presentation, but you've exceeded your three minutes by.
I'm going to leave the quote, and that is, George Washington said was, "What students would learn in American schools above all is the religion of Jesus Christ."
Thank you.
One other.
Thank you, sir.
May I bring up one more thing, ma'am?
No, sir. We have a strict time limit. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
All right. Next, Ms. Renee Smith. You signed the, you have no comments?
No.
All right. Thank you. Recognition of council members. We'll start with Mr. Odom.
Well, appreciate again Ron, Mr. Carabao meeting with the police chief in McCall, and we'll get that started, and that'll be a good thing for the county and for the McCall Police Department. Of course, everybody knows me, I've always been sort of a big thing about elections. And last Tuesday, it was very disappointing for me to see the turnout that we had. I think we had 2,700 people out of 17,000 people that was registered to vote, voted, which is about a 15.8% turnout. The weather was terrible, no question about it, probably the worst day we've had for elections in a long, long time. But anyway, we do have runoff elections coming up, both on the Democrat side and the Republican side, coming up this Tuesday. And, side note here, he's in a runoff. So I'd urge everybody in Marlborough County to take the time. The machines are open in Vinnetville now that you can walk in if you have something planned for next Tuesday. Please go by the Vinnetville office for voter registration and vote. And, you know, this Tuesday, whatever you're doing, please take time out to go vote. For the last 242 years, men and women have given their lives so that we have that right to free and open elections. And it's the least that we can do is take time out, as little as 30 seconds, to go and vote and support the candidates of your choice. I'd appreciate it.
I just want to echo everything Mr. Odom here said, and also just thank staff for all their hard work in keeping our finances straight because they do a good job. And the other thing is just seeing them actually coming out when they're calling, they don't mind being there to look and, you know, we've got a lot, a lot of things done in the last few years, and I'm, I'm right proud of it. And I see that we on the right, on the right road now. I think we're going to have a good year coming up, and I just thank Ron and staff for the good work you have done.
Well, I'm looking at the voters also, less than 16% of people voting in the county. Regardless of who you vote for, that's a shame. We really got to improve that a great deal. For the election though, Steve Blackman is running, and I'm looking at the way we work together as a family, things that we've been doing, things we need to keep doing. People talk about change. A lot of times, change is necessary. But in this case, with this county that we got, we don't need to change. What we need is to keep who we got right here to continue doing what we're doing, and that's extremely important. But I'm glad that we work together as a family to do that. The other thing that I have to say is though, Brightsville-Adamsville Park, which is very close to me, is having annual fireworks on the 29th of this month, which will be next Friday. We also giving out trophies to our T-ball team, our basketball team. I thank the sponsors for sponsoring them. I would appreciate as many people as we can get to come out to support our little T-ball team for them to get their trophies and for the fireworks that night. Brightsville Fire Department will be out to support us like they always do with the kids. Besides, come out to our walking trail, which is very, very important, which is the only walking trail that we really got open now. It's going to be a great day, not just for Brightsville, but I'm really talking about for the kids. The kids need to see other kids out there, even if they didn't play ball. Grandparents, everybody come out and support our children and have our fireworks that night.
What's the date on that?
The 29th. We're going to start giving our trophies out about 6 o'clock in the afternoon for the kids. We have the bouncing machines, we feeding them. Everybody loves fire trucks, know what it is about kids and fire trucks. But Brightsville Fire Department is going to turn out for us, and we really looking at this here to be a special day. Everybody loves fireworks, young, old. And I think every year we get better and better. This year, I think we got some real nice surprises coming out for our fireworks, so if you can, appreciate it.
Thank you. They did put on a good fireworks show, and they do a good job of doing the kids, and that is a great thing. Kind of disturbed that they, we had this letter here from the city, county, from the city, you know, changing or not approving the agreement we had so far. Usually whenever this happens, staff usually get together and work it out. If we were to change anything, I, I got quite sure that Mr. Mullin would have met and tried to work something out. So hopefully, this can get signed, and we can move forward and, and make sure that we continue to have legal coverage for fire protection and everything else in our cities, outside our city limits. So hopefully that can be, hopefully that's been done as we sit here tonight. So I thank Dr. Prince for, for getting on it too and, and, you know, looking after the citizens. You know, public safety is one thing that we all, it falls on us as council member to make sure that we look for public safety. to make sure that we look for public safety of everybody, you know, so we're thankful. Thank the sheriff and the chief deputy, thank for coming, they usually try to be here all the time. Mrs. Ainsley Moore for the staff for finance, and Mr. Caribou, and welcome Mr. Hamilton on board, welcome him, and just thank Mr. Munnell for, you know, sharpening that pencil. It's always good to see, you know, those, being able to be more efficient with county government, everybody says we waste, 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 but you know, there's, we don't have a nickel, I mean, all you have is a couple pennies, it's hard to waste any pennies, so but we're thankful for what they do, and keep sharpening it, you know, it'd be nice that one day when we could start reducing taxes, you know, it would be a good thing to still provide, you know, services that we need. Hopefully one day the local government fund will be funded, and back to where it used to be, or at least come up with a formula that everybody can agree with and move forward, you know, they can even come up with a formula they agree with down in Columbia, so it'd be nice that they could, and help us here locally move forward here for Marlborough County.
Mr. Smith?
I'd like to commend staff on the budget, and welcome Donald Hamilton to the employee group, and Ms. Polly, thank you, I'm inspired by your ambition to restart recycling here, and I support those efforts. That's it.
I'd like to say a couple of things. I appreciate everything that we do, Mr. Munnell, Dr. Prince, y'all do a great job, and I would like to say that regardless of what you do in life, you've always crossed a stumbling block, but you gotta know how to cross that stumbling block and keep moving, and we've been able to do that as a council, and we run into quite a few in the times that I've been here, but we was able to overcome them and came out victorious every time, and I know that we're gonna continue to do the same thing, 'cause we got some hard-working people here on this council, and they don't mind working. And Mr. Gladon, you having the thing you just said at the park on the twenty-ninth? Yes, I would love to be a part of it, but I will be at the beach, and, but I know you're gonna have a great time up there with the kids, and I know they're gonna enjoy it. Really, I, you know, I really wish I could be there, but I can't be in two places one time.
No, you don't, you'll be at the beach. We didn't wanna be at the beach. It's our world.
But that's about all I have to say, but we, another thing, Steve, you know I'm pulling for you, I really am, I'm gonna pull for you, you pulled it on out, but I'm really pulling for you, I hope and pray that everything gonna work out for you, I really do. Okay.
You finished?
Yeah, I'm finished.
Um, first and foremost, I'd like to thank everybody who voted for me last Tuesday, it was, they always say in politics, either you run on a poll or you run scared, and I appreciate everybody who came and supported me and voted for me. I'd like to thank the Claudio Rexer Squad for allowing us to use the building, represented Jackie Hayes and myself, and the council members. It was real good to see, when everybody talking about we are a good team, at our meeting greet, you know, we had, we had enough for a quorum, I'd be beautiful to meet, you know. We had everybody good except for Dr. Prince and Mr. Vacation himself, Mr. Mizley, but, you know, we had a good time, and anytime you have a public event and you can see your colleagues there pushing you and encouraging you on, you know, it make you feel good, it make you feel appreciated, and that was, it made me feel. And like I say, Steve, you know, you know, we in your camp, you know, we in your corner, you need us, you know, just let us know. And we are a, a strong unit, and come from Ms. Plato, I think you the senior member, you the senior member?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah. We had a senior member say that we've been through a lot of ups and downs, and, you know, we had tied everything together, we went through sheriff departments and different sheriffs, and we got a good man and a good sidekick, you know, over there, and they come in and, and, you know, they do what they gotta do, you know, we're all one, you know, we got ups and downs like everybody else, but we continue to pull together when we have to, and that will make, you know, you keep climbing that mountain, you know, to go to work every day and come to this meeting, and we hash it out, and we beat things around, but like I say, at the end of the day, we, it's Marlborough County that we work for, the community, whether it's recreation, whether it's employment, whether it's anything that we can do, we gotta put our hands in it, we have no problem of doing that. Dr. Prince, I'm, like I say, once again, I thank everybody.
All right. Just some brief comments, and to continue in that vein, we are a good team, and that we do set the bar high, and for good reason, and we get a lot accomplished because of our commitment to the citizens of Marlborough County. We're ending the year off, we covered a lot of ground, we have some new employees, we have a bit of reorganization, and streamlined and efficiency, and cost savings, which is always a good thing, and so at the wrap-up this fiscal year, we have accomplished a lot. Improvements for existing business, some prospects for some new business, and that's music to our ears, because when we're small, we rule, and we want the best, and we need money to do that. You mentioned Northeastern Tech is doing its renovations, they're on target to be open in August, that'll be another educational opportunity for citizens in our community. So I think we have a lot to be thankful for, and we don't take anything for granted, and we all work for the common good for everybody in the county, so for that I am thankful for, and I appreciate your confidence in my leadership, and the fact that regardless, we're always working for the good of the citizens regardless whether they live in our district or not. So with that said, and to thank the employees, of course, the administrative staff, that goes without saying, we couldn't do what we do about them, so thank you much. Please be mindful of this heat wave we are having, keep yourselves and your pets, check on elderly people in your community, it's very easy to get dehydrated and those kinds of things, so just be careful. On that note, I call this meeting adjourned.